All right, I will call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, our 2023. Call persons interested in or affected by the actions on board of appeals here hereby notified pursuant to section 11 of chapter 40A of the general laws. Other Commonwealth matches and all amendments there too, that a public hearing on the following appeals will be held on Wednesday, March 8, 2023, at times indicated. The zoning board of appeals public here will be held by remote participation methods. Public access is meaning shelter be provided in the following manner. The meeting will be televised via channel 18 and may be viewed via the channel eight website at HTTP. Colon slash streaming eighty-five dot town of Barnstable dot US slash cable cast public site. Full time access is only more appeals meeting is available by utilizing zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID. Provided, public comment can be addressed as only more appeals by utilizing the zoom link and or telephone number and meeting ID provided. The zoom link is HTTPS colon slash slash town of Barnstable dash US dot zoom dot US slash J. Eight three eight four three eight three five two three nine, or call eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. And enter the meeting ID eight three eight four three eight three five two three nine. Applicants representative representatives and individuals required are entitled. To appear before the zoning board of appeals may appear remotely and may participate through accessing the link or telephone number provided. Documentary exhibits and or visual presentation should be submitted in advance of the meeting to Anna. Brigham at town dot Barnstable dot MA dot you they may be displayed for public for remote public access viewing copies. Applications are available by review by calling five oh eight. Eight six two four six eight two for emailing Anna dot Brigham at town dot Barnstable dot MA dot US. And just to confirm our David, are we streaming on channel 18 right now or no?
We are not, no.
Okay, I guess I should just note that the the notice did say that it was going to be televised, but is not being televised live.
Yeah, it'll be available tomorrow on our YouTube channel.
Okay. Um. So I'll call the meeting to order with introduction to board members, her bone seat.
I'm present.
Paul Pennard.
Frozen.
Mark Hanson.
Present.
Aaron Webb.
Present.
Denise Johnson. I don't think Denise is here, but there's a lot of people in the room. Denise, speak up if you're here. All right. So Denise is not present. Uh, notice of recording, please know this meeting is is recorded and broadcast on channel 18 in accordance with MGL chapter 30A section 20. I must inquire whether anyone is taping this meeting to please make their presence known. All right, seeing none meetings not being recorded. First item of business, we have minutes from February eighth, twenty twenty. Three, have a chance for viewing any comments on the minutes. All right, I'll make a motion to approve of the minute. Send me the second.
Second, Mark Hanson.
All right, and a roll call vote, her bone seek.
I'm in favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. Um, all right. So our first item is old business appeal number twenty twenty-two dash zero five seven Perry S. Flintworth has applied for a special permit in accordance with section two forty dash forty-seven to see. For accessory dwelling unit, the applicant sees to construct a detached two bedroom accessory dwelling unit which exceeds the allowable as of right square footage. The proposed accessory dwelling unit is one thousand eight hundred seventy-six square feet and the as of right size is not. Nine hundred square feet thereby exceeding the allowable size by nine hundred and seventy-six square feet. The subject property is located at sixteen Wally Court Highness Mass as a shown assessors map three two four as parcel zero two zero properties. Cated residence B B zoning district. This was continued from January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Um, and we did have testimony on that day. Members assigned were myself, Aaron Webb, Paul Pennard, Denise Johnson, and her bone seek. Um, is attorney Lawler here?
Mister Chair, we did receive a request via email to continue to the twelfth of April.
But he should be here, correct or no?
Well, the email came in last night, so I received it this morning.
Okay. Um, well, I've taken that, I guess, but I thought I thought we had made a rule that if it was within, I think it was ten o'clock this morning that the email time had come in that we were gonna. That attorneys or representatives were going to be present for continuances within that time to explain. I didn't see any explanation, explanation, email of why it was why it was asked for continuance.
Attorney Lawler thought.
Someone wants to make a motion.
Mister Chair.
I guess.
Um, attorney Lawler did, I talked to him today and he did say that he thought since sending the email about five o'clock yesterday. And he was within the the timeframe.
Um, does someone want to make a motion to accept attorney Lawler's request for continuance to April twelfth, twenty twenty-three?
I will move that we post someone that's on the twelfth.
Oh, so I could pull.
All right. Her makes a motion, Paul seconds, roll call vote, her bone seek.
In favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Darren Webb.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. So that's continued to for twelve of twenty twenty-three. Um, moving right along, um. We have appeal number twenty twenty-three dash zeros zero one Centerville Gardens. The L Gardens two LLC has petitioned for a variance pursuant to section two forty-one twenty-five B one C and E. Very variances, two forty dash one oh seven wireless requirements article. Uh, for site plan review and MGL chapter forty A, the petitioner seeks to construct a hundred and ten foot. Above ground level, a monopole, monopole style tower with a capacity for at least four wireless communication services. Providers together with related amplifiers, cables, fiber and other associated antenna equipment. To replace this is to replace the existing tower at ten forty-seven Falmouth Road. Where thirty feet is the maximum height, the subject properties are located at thirty-six Quocket Lane. Centerville and ten sixty Falmouth Road Hyannis as shown assessors map two five zero as parcel zero two three dash T zero zero. And zero two three dash H zero zero respectively. The parcels are located in the residence. D one RD one and highway business HB zoning districts respectively. Um, this is continued from February eighth, twenty twenty-three, where we did take testimony. Um, I believe we left public comment open. Members assigned were myself, her bones, Hansen, Aaron Webb, and Paul Pennard. Um. Attorney Par, I believe you're. Here for this, and would you allow me to also read the special permit request in?
Yeah, I was gonna make that request, but Chairman, since they're based on all the same evidence and facts, that would be great.
Okay, so in addition, an appeal number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero two Centerville Gardens two LLC has also applied. For a modification of a special permit, two thousand twelve dash zero zero seven condition number five pursuant to section two forty-one twenty-five C and MGL chapter forty-eight. The applicant seeks to allow commercial activity and associated site improvements within the portion. Of the site located within RD one is zoning district, the subject property is located at thirty-six Quocket Lane, Centerville and ten sixty Falmouth Road Hyannis. As shown on assessors map two five zero as parcel zero two three dash T zero zero and zero two three H zero zero respectively. The parcels are located in the residence D one RD one and highway business HB zoning district. Um, continued this continued again from February eighth, twenty twenty-three, and the same members were assigned myself, her boat and see. Mark Hanson, Aaron Webb, and Paul Pennard, and public comment is still open on this item. All right. Whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, members of the of the board. Just a quick refresh as to where we were. We finished up our presentation last month. Uh, at the end of the hearing, uh, in a butter, Mister Rick Harrington Harrigan. Uh, had stepped forward and said he had not had time to review the application. Um, subsequently, and I think the board has in its files, Mister Harrigan sent an email. Uh, to the town, uh. Letting the board know that he was, as he says, canceling his appeal or withdrawing his appeal. Um, with respect to the comments, so he had additional time. Uh, and withdrew his, uh, his appeal, as he puts it. Um, I would, I think the one open issue, one of the members. Of the board asked about the crane test and we sort of made a general response, so. But yeah, the the crane itself, uh, you know, is located in a spot which was ever cleared. The boom is raised, so that's at an angle. Uh, the location of the tower is where the red balloon was positioned, uh. During the crane test, so. I know there was, you know, a photograph of it, you know, crane was kind of going up at an angle and then a question was, you know, where is the tower in relationship to that? Uh, so it's positioned strategically as Scott Adams, our engineer. Uh, said it is positioned to the location where the tower is underneath it, so. Uh, the tower obviously looks straight down from, uh. Uh, from that red balloon. Uh, so with that, Mister Chairman, I. I don't know if there were any other questions from the board. We had kind of wrapped up the questions. Uh, again, the continuance, I think, was granted to allow Mister Harrigan some time, uh. To review the application, uh, which he apparently has done, uh. Um. You know, he had two, you know, objections, one was visibility, uh, the other was emissions, and as the board is aware. Uh, so long as the. Uh, the facility complies with the FCC standards, then, uh, you know, this board certainly has no jurisdiction and federal law governs. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. So we have, we have our whole team here, so I'm sure we fill the room to some extent. Uh, but all of our experts are here and available for any questions. Uh, with that, Mister Chairman, I'd, uh. I'd ask if there are any questions or comments, be happy to respond.
All right, thank you. Um, anyone from the board have any questions for the applicant?
Um, yes, this is Paul. Uh, the board still must find, um, must rule on, uh, three conditions. Uh, while if their met does not automatically, um, results in approval, I would like to review those three. And so that I can articulate them.
Okay, um, but no questions direct for the applicant at this point.
Well, yeah, one, two, three.
I was gonna ask, so attorney. Three. I guess, I guess attorney pair, we're looking for some. Some direction on our three-prong test here of how you feel we can comfortably meet those conditions.
And the conditions for variance, I mean, I understand this for.
Correct, correct, yes.
Yep, so I mean, I'll run through them briefly and summarize, but in our application packets, uh, we spent extensive time. Uh, and you have, uh, our. Uh, arguments as to how we meet each of those variant standards. Uh. So number one is a little bit different because we are dealing with wireless facilities, so that is as it relates to hardship. Um, so in addition to, you know, hardship relating to the lot topography in soil conditions. Uh, there, there is another. There is another hardship under, recognized by Massachusetts law, um, in the Massachusetts courts, and that's a gap in coverage. So, uh, the way Barnstable currently has its zoning ordinance, uh. You know, if you would exceed, I guess, thirty or thirty-five feet being the maximums in the jurisdictions, you wouldn't have any wireless coverage because. You wouldn't be above the buildings, the fray, the foliage, et cetera. So. Once we take down the tower across the street, you're gonna have T-Mobile and Verizon certainly, uh, with no coverage in the area. AT&amp;T currently suffers a significant gap in coverage, which we've documented for the board. Through the materials submitted from PC squared and Dish Wireless, as I mentioned, is a new entrant to the market. They have no coverage. So they have significant gaps everywhere, just like when the networks were launching. Um, so likewise, with the hardship owing to circumstance relating to soil soil condition, shape or topography. Uh, again, it's the, it's the gaps in coverage of the wireless networks under federal law, again, which can be recognized and. Uh, the board can rely on that as a hardship. I go into details as to nine one one coverage. First net services, uh, availability through AT&amp;T. First, that is a, a. Uh, network, uh, which was created out of the nine or recommended out of the nine one one. Uh, commissioned and created by the federal government to allow first responders to have proprietary access to wireless. Uh, services during a catastrophic event or a significant event, so, you know. During the nine eleven situation, the cell phone coverage was overwhelmed. I, the federal government put out a bid, AT&amp;T won that bid and will be able to provide first net coverage. Uh, which, you know, they're not doing now because they don't have a site in the area. I would also, uh, the uniqueness of the situation is that we have a tower, existing tower directly across the street at ten. Uh, forty-seven. Um. I guess ten forty-seven, I ten forty-seven Falmouth Road, uh, that, as I explained to the board, is that tower was coming down in twenty twenty-four due to the expiration of the lease agreement. Uh. This is a replacement site, basically at the same elevation and height, uh, as I mentioned, uh. The star will be a hundred and ten feet, tower across the street is a hundred and eighteen feet, but we do gain eight feet of elevation, so, uh. From a net height perspective, T-Mobile and Verizon, uh, won't have any reduction in coverage. And lastly, the desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of of the ordinance. So as I said, the way the ordinance is set up, uh. You know, it's been determined from past practice and interpretation by the town. That, you know, towers are allowed everywhere in town in all of the zoning districts, uh. The way to to regulate those are through the height issues, so, you know, applicants are required to seek a height variance. Uh. Providing coverage allowing T-Mobile and Verizon to continue to provide coverage along AT&amp;T and Dish. Uh, to provide coverage for their networks, uh, again, is a benefit to public safety, uh. Because it's a net swap of effective effectively a net swap of a tower from one. Side of Falmouth Road to the other, uh, there's no detriment to the public. From the evidence we've provided, there is no impact with property values. We have, uh, submitted are the results of the crane test with visibility. Uh, obviously along Route twenty-eight, which is a commercial corridor, uh, there will be some visibility or the majority of the visibility. We picked a location where there is, um. That existing vegetation and trees, uh, so that. Uh, the tower and the base of the equipment is screened from view. We've added, uh, significant fencing, including, uh, sound attenuation to. Uh, protect the interest of the residential properties to the rear, uh, of the site. And, uh. You know, the facility is unmanned, doesn't require any town services, uh, barely electric utilities and, uh, communications likely through fiber. As I said, I I do go on for probably too many pages, but I do, you know, as part of the application, I do go into great detail on each of those standards, uh, as part of our packet.
I do.
Excuse me, attorney par, um, just a question on that first.
Yeah, I'll have Mark.
Sorry, uh, the gap in coverage, do you do, just at your fingertips have that, um, is it a federal statute?
I'm sorry, I, I, I missed the beginning of your question, but.
It's just on on the the gap in coverage as as are the first prong. Do you happen to have that statute, um, at your fingertips by any chance?
Oh, sure. It's the Federal Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six. And there's a number of cases, I think I cited them in my brief, uh, which recognizing there's a case in Wayland. Uh, it is a case in Lincoln, Massachusetts, which kind of the seminal cases, uh, we also did a. Um. And you can, you can see there are a number of cases from that. There's a city of Cranston case, uh, with T-Mobile, which lays out the factors, uh. And it does give the board the authority to grant variances, uh, to, to comply with federal law, basically.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, any other board members have questions before you go to public comment, close public comment, and then we'll deliberate.
Yeah, I just have, I just have a quick question. I was wondering if the town was ever brought into discussions attorney regarding. Land that might be more suitable, provide a bigger, larger buffer zone, um, from the tower itself, you know, just thinking out loud to myself about the fact that the middle schools plus high school property is. A couple hundred yards down Route twenty-eight. Um, seen the, um, um, what used to be known as a senior center is there too, just wondering if that was ever brought into discussion regarding placement of this particular tower.
Yeah, it, it, I'm sorry. Is it okay to respond?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so I, I don't think we went that far, uh, afield. Again, we are, we have an existing tower at ten forty-seven Falmouth Road. Directly across the street from the where we're proposing the new tower. Um, so we, we certainly stayed within the geographic. Area of, you know, where T-Mobile and Verizon are providing coverage, uh, because we're at net wash on height. Um, you know, they'll be able to maintain what they have. Uh, we did look at a number of alternative locations as part of our packet, uh, which was submitted. Uh, I know that we talked to the church, uh, nearby and a few of the. Uh, parcels nearby, but I don't think we went as far as the town and. You know, through the public hearing process, we haven't, you know, that there was no. A discussion of the town being interested as we went through the Cape Cod Commission process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so let's just go to public comment. Is there anyone here to speak to this item?
Uh, yeah, there was somebody, uh, Robert Wagner, I believe. If.
Yes.
Mister Wagner, if you could just state your name and your address for the record, and then, uh, you can speak.
Sure. Hi, my name is Robert Winger, and I'm in a butter at eight ten Strubel Road. Uh, have had the most direct view to the proposed on tower and I just, I'd like to keep it short. I appreciate attorney pairs discussion. I I worked with him through the subcommittee. Uh, comments and fundamentally certainly a somebody I'd like to work with, um, in a future, a solid person. Uh, but I got a couple of, a couple of points, and one, I just caught my ear that he mentioned to be no negative, uh, property values in the area. Uh, he did, he did provide a, a licensed appraiser from Rhode Island who gave testimony at both the last meeting of the ZBA and, uh, Cape Cod Commission. And he referenced on, uh, a comp example in in Hampshire and one he had said he had an example, one condo example in Falmouth. Uh, since then, and that's the extent of his testimony, I did canvas the local sampling of local realtors who. All assured me that property values will be negatively impacted by the proposed tower. I have the list of the realtors. And, uh, many would be recognized, uh, as local industry leaders by by the committee here, um. Be happy to provide that list. Um, the the negative impact of property values was addressed in in the Cape Cod, uh, Commission Development of, uh, Regional Impact, the DRI. That that was, uh, I guess submitted, put out in November twenty twenty-two and section F sixty-nine, who I I looked it up. Included a statement that said, quote, more acute acute impacts to properties in the immediate proximity to the site. So even the, uh, commission recognized there would be some property better, so I challenge that premise that attorney, uh, pair made. I'll go real quick. I have just two more points. Um, the also, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, and also back to the DRI, which the Cape Cod Commission, um, and this was referenced in the last meeting to ZBA. And and I probably got it wrong, but I made it, and I got the feeling that, um, the. The attorney wanted to suggest you that the Cape Cod Commission approved this and the ZBA should just rub a stamp it. But the, the, uh. The decision by the Kicker Commission was really a development of regional impact. What impact did it have to the region? And it it really, it didn't have any. It has an impact of Quocket Lane. Um, the, and the third thing, and probably the most important one, which was touched on. Is the zoning board of appeals, uh, special permit that was, uh, issued based on in March of twenty twelve. And, um, I I I trust all of of read that, and these are your, uh, zoning board of appeals predecessors equally committed and respectful to the balance of the town of what the town approved. But the special permit, uh, twenty twelve oh oh seven, uh, for relief to construct a medical office behind, really next to CBS. All members approved the vote to, uh, approved the special exemption on the condition that. The residential zone portion of the property shall remain undeveloped in a natural state. And I I would argue that the, uh, twenty twelve ZBA's intention was to protect neighboring properties from the impact of any, any further commercial development creep. Um, and this was, uh, approved unanimously by the ZBA members and and I'll I'll list them, Laura Schufert, uh, William Newton, Craig Larson, Alex. For Delicus, Brian Florence and George Avita. So they, they had, in my mind, the intention that hopefully no further zoning board of appeals would would, um, would overturn. Um, this type of decision, so appreciate it. Thank you very much, and I kept it short and quick, but I know you, everybody has valuable time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Wagner. Uh, is there anyone else here to speak to this item from the public?
I believe he was the only one.
If it was her.
Uh, this, he's the only one I have.
Um. Okay, and there's no one in the waiting room currently. Okay, all right, um, so I'll take a motion to close public comment.
Mister Chairman, if I could just, uh, one quick comment, just in rebuttal, uh, just so that I can respond. Uh, you know, I understand that some realtors will have, uh, you know, issues in their own opinions. I would, you know, reference George Valentine's, uh, credentials. He's also a Massachusetts licensed real estate appraiser, not a realtor, he's an appraiser, uh. Which deals with value. I will say that from my own personal experience, uh, and those of colleagues. Having cell phone coverage is a requirement to purchasing a house, so there may be some that don't. There are others that wouldn't purchase unless there were. Uh, cell phone service coverage. Uh, as far as the special permit, as I said, we have a situation where, you know, some folks are gonna consider this to be a, you know, an extension of the commercial. Activity that was granted, as I pointed out on our plans and test of, and we, you know, presented testimony to the, not only the Cape Cod Commission, but to this zoning board. And during site plan, that a lot of this property which we would be impacting was previously cleared. This, you know, there was a house there, there was a garage there, if you recall, uh, which are, you know. Uh, there is, you know, underlying our plans, all we're doing is we're continuing and pushing back from the commercial development. This isn't going to be in addition to the medical facility. This isn't going to be another commercial use. This is infrastructure for wireless communications. You know, likewise, I will also say that the tower across the street is going to be removed. Some people may feel that, you know, that doesn't have a particularly good look at it there. There are, you know, a number of antennas, including some whip antennas, uh, on that tower, so. There is a trade off here. We all love our cell phones. We all love the service, but we need the infrastructure to deal with it, so. You know, the view of that other tower, which is highly visible also along with twenty-eight and, you know, possibly. From Mister Wagner's property also, um. Will be removed and this will be added, so, you know, we try to balance and and take the best approach forward. We did ask for relief, uh, to modify that. You know, special permit, we have a unique situation, uh, that, you know, again, with the Federal Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six. The standard being the same that, you know, decisions, uh. You know, boards have to take no account whether they're effectively prohibiting service, and again, this is all laid out in my brief. With that, I'll stop talking, Mister Chairman. I do appreciate the attention, uh, of all the board members and the comments from the public. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else from the public want to speak to this? Going one, one, scoot and twice. All right, I'll make a motion to close public comment. On both appeal number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one and twenty twenty-three dash zero zero two. That mark for a second.
Yeah.
Or her, all right, roll call vote on closing public comment, her bone seat.
In favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor on both petitions.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
All right, and I am also in favor, so public comment is closed on both, uh, twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one and zero zero two. Um, so it brings us back to the board for deliberation in here. Um. I, Mark and Paul, to your point, I. I, Mark and Paul, to your point, I still not getting like a an easy answer here of our, of how we're justifying our circumstances. But do you guys have thoughts?
Well, stuck on number two.
Well, to me, let me see, Mark, that's a good question. Number two. Number two is the nine eleven. I mean, let's see, I think with the conundrum here is, okay, renew the lease where the tower is, but that's, I assume they've tried that or whatever. But if we en- enforce the provisions of the zoning ordinance, then we got a problem with nine one one coverage. And I think that satisfies point number two.
I think that would be number, well, yeah, but that's, it's not up to the petitioner. The hardship financial to the petitioner. So just with number one, are we looking at topography and structures?
Well, I, I see number one as a gap in coverage. I think the the nineteen ninety six Federal Telecommunication Communications Act covers that. It probably covers the whole thing, but to be safe here. I think that the number one would be the nineteen ninety six Federal Telecommunications Act, as I read it anyway. Number two would be well, I, I think there's obviously a financial issue here with the, with the petitioner.
That's where I would have gone with it.
Yeah, I mean, he's got current revenue from T-Mobile and Verizon. And he would sacrifice that plus AT&amp;T and Dish. So I think there's a financial issue here with respect to number two. And number three, I think it's from what I can, it, it's a tower of the same height. It's had a balloon test with respect to visibility and they've, they've got sound attenuation and screening. And I don't know how to weigh that against you know, what local realtors would say about the value of or the, the effect on the value of housing.
Mark, do you have any thoughts? Aaron?
I'm sort of similar where Paul sits. I do believe there's a financial hardship here. I, I mean, I understand it's a large company, but there's obviously you know, tens, maybe hundreds of thousands of dollars involved in getting to this point within the process. I do believe the gap in coverage is not only, you know, for the petitioner, but it is obviously for the general public. I just, again, I, I don't, I think Paul is probably right in that this federal questions that Communications Act probably covers the whole thing. But for the sake of that, I think we have our three because we're really doing a like like kind transfer of tower to tower. I, I can't imagine we're not really going to an area that's any more commercial or less commercial. So I, I think we're we've got what we need.
Okay. Herb, do you have any thoughts or questions or comments?
Um, well, I can see a cell phone tower on my drive up the street from where I live and I I like see it one, one out of a hundred times. It's like either I'm so used to seeing it. Uh, or the times that I see it, it's almost a shock. Like, oh my God, there's a cell phone tower there. But I can't really speak to having one visible out my that's, I'm kind of I wouldn't even say on the fence. I, I don't think I have an opinion. But I don't think it would really. Yeah. I'm not opposed to having a cell phone.
Aaron, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just quickly, I, I was definitely intrigued by Mr. Wenger's presentation there regarding the usage back when the, you know, was granted for medical purposes and so forth. And I'm also just, again, I I do worry about number three and the detriment to the public good. You know, on both sides of the equation, public good would be clearly affected if we did not grant it and the tower at the Charles Building came down and there was no structure, you know, in its place. And yet I do worry about the, as Mr. Wenger indicated, property values in the area. I think it's, it's you know, again, I don't know definitively, but I do think it's, it, it will be affected for sure. So that's why my point about the high school came up, that property. You know, there's a pretty gigantic parcel there between the high school, the middle school and the adult center. That would provide, in my opinion, a much greater buffer zone to any foreseeable neighbor. I don't even think we'd, you know, so it was just a, you know, a thought. I was curious if he had had it. If the conversation had been had with the town and how the town stands on it, who also maybe benefit the town financially. I walk that property often. So, you know, I don't know how we live without it at this point. Yeah. So but, you know, it, it's, yeah, it's I guess I feel like Herb does. I really don't have an opinion, I guess, other than we, I know we need a cell phone tower. So.
Okay.
Yo, Mr. Chairman, I have a a question for the, for the attorney. What other sites were, and I don't, did not read, or I don't have in front of me anyway, the hundred and eighty six page submission or whatever, but were there multiple sites that were considered for location of this tower or just that one?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I know the hearing is closed, but we did
Yeah, go ahead.
I did provide an al- an alternative site analysis. Let me just get the reference points. Is that exhibit six of, of the hundred and eighty six pages? So there were A, B, C, D, E, F. Those were six.
Okay, thank you.
Those are the locations which we listed. As I said, it's, it's that, it's that it's that pad six in the materials we provided.
Okay, thank you.
Were those sites, those sites were possibilities or you guys were just looking, and just looking at it now, getting very familiar with it? Were those actual sites that were available for?
No, those, those, those are possibilities. As you'll see in our explanation, some people didn't respond. For instance, the church didn't want the antennas on their property. TRP Hyannis LLC at six twenty five West Main was not interested in entering into a lease agreement. So those are the six that were, you know, real possibilities where there was enough space. You know, to put it, to put the tower, you know, satisfy setback requirements and the like.
Um, does anyone, anyone else on the board have questions or just someone want to make findings or make a motion?
Yeah, I can make findings, Jim.
Go ahead, Paul.
Okay, this has to do with, I'm going to take the special permit first. Has to do with appeal number twenty twenty three dash oh oh two, Senoval Gardens two LLC is applies for a modification of special permit. Two thousand twelve dash oh oh seven, condition number five pursuant to section two forty dash one twenty five C. And MGL chapter forty A. The applicant seeks to allow commercial activity and associated site improvements within the portion of the site located within RD one zoning district. The subject properties are located at thirty six Quarket, uh, Lane Centerville and ten sixty Falmouth Road Hyannis. As shown on the census map, two fifties parcels, zero two three dash T O O and zero two three dash H O O respectively. Parts is located in the residence D one slash RD one, RD dash one and highway business HB zoning district respectively. I guess that was oh oh two, oh oh one. In Senoval Gardens two LLC is petition for variance. Variance subject to, to section two forty dash one twenty five B, one C and E variances, two forty dash one oh seven wireless requirements. Article nine I X, site plan review and MGL chapter forty A. The positioner seeks to construct a one hundred and ten foot above ground level AGL, monopole type tower with a capacity for at least four wireless communication service providers together with related amplifiers cables, fiber and other associated antenna equipment. Replace existing tower at one oh four seven Falmouth Road where thirty feet is the maximum height. The subject properties are located at thirty six Quarket Lane Centerville and ten sixty Falmouth Road Hyannis. As shown on assesses map two fifty is parcels two oh, zero two three dash T O O and zero two three dash H O O respectively. The process is located in the residence D one, RD one and the highway business HB zoning distance respectively. There was a three prong test, which if satisfied does not automatically admit, approve this, but I want to go through those. The first one is owing to circumstances related to soil conditions, shape and topography of such land or structures and especially affected such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. I believe that the nineteen ninety six Federal Telecommunications, Telecommunications Act satisfies this point number one. Point number two, a little enforcement of the provisions of the zoning ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise to the petitioner. I would suggest that this is both, excuse me, that the gap in coverage which would result from T-Mobile and Verizon and also the potential clients of AT&amp;T and Dish would be, would be dramatically hurt by this. And number three, and, and number two also of the nine one one service. Given the fact that Tower one oh four seven would, would not be in use anymore, the gap in nine one one coverage would certainly be detrimental to, would not be certainly in compliance with the zoning ordinance. Number three, desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance. And I submit that this is a replacement tower of equal height. There's been a balloon test for visibility. There's also going to be some additional sound attenuation and screening provided by the petitioner. Those are my findings.
Thank you, Paul. Do I have a second on Paul's proposal to approve the variance?
Second, Mark Hanson.
All right. On a roll call vote on approving the variance, Herb Bodensee.
I'm in favor.
Paul Pinnard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
I'm in favor.
And I'm also in favor. So Paul, do you have conditions?
I do. Yeah, I do. The conditions are for for appeal number two thousand twenty three dash oh oh one, our conditions one through four. And for, for appeal number two thousand twenty three oh oh two or one through five, as presented by staff.
Well, we're gonna, we still, I think we need to read oh two still.
I read both of them in.
Okay, I know we need to make findings on the second one after we finish this.
So yes, uh, it'd be conditions one through four or two thousand twenty three dash oh oh one. And, uh, attorney, are you, have you, are you aware of these, Attorney Parry?
Uh, yeah, yes, we are. I mean, they you're talking on the variants.
Correct, on the variants, yes.
Yes, we, we, we have seen the staff report and we have no issue with the conditions.
Mr. Chair.
I'm showing five just for clarification.
Add.
Go ahead, Anna.
So the staff report had been revised and a new condition had been in included, which references the Cape Cod Commission DRI decision. And, and that pulls the conditions in from the Cape Cod Commission to this, to the town. So there are five conditions. It's in a, it's in the new staff report.
It's a staff report dated January twenty fourth, Paul.
Okay, well, I, I apologize. I don't have that, but I would add that fifth one. If someone could read it or I don't.
Yeah, go ahead. Can someone read it?
Yeah, it's number three. All conditions set forth in the Cape Cod Commission Development of Regional Impact Decision recorded at the Registry of Deeds book three five five four zero, page seventy three are hereby incorporated into this decision.
Thanks, Mark. Attorney Parry, is that okay with you?
We, we, we are aware, we are aware of the added condition of, and or chair the report with us.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Jim, Jim, do you think that's okay that we leave as written or do we need to make a modification to it?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If, if you've cited the date and, and report, I think that's sufficient. I think one item that maybe be clarified is, is condition eighteen, maybe pulling that out and highlighting that as Attorney Par is referenced, there is a requirement to decommission that other pole. And I think that is a, a very pertinent condition, not, not to belittle the other conditions, but this one is a, a very important conditions in terms of the quality and care of the, the neighborhood and its surroundings. So if, if the board is willing, just citing the, the staff report with the updated data as Ms. Brigham had provided you with identifying specifically condition eighteen, which really draws the attention to the building commissioner as, as construction is ongoing.
Is that condition eighteen in the regional impact decision?
Correct, sir.
So that would be included in number five then.
If the board, if the board agrees, yes, sir.
Okay, so those are my findings, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so as suggested we're, we're moving it as suggested by Mr. Cooper.
One through five, yes.
Okay. All right. So we'll take your roll call vote on the conditions. Uh, Bodensee.
I'm in favor.
Paul Pinnard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron, Aaron Webb.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. So that covers the variance. But now, Paul, do you want to do the special permit?
Yeah, I just read that in. Should you want to read it in again?
Um, I think you can just reference the appeal number. I don't think you need to read the whole thing.
This concerns appeal number twenty twenty three dash oh oh two. The three conditions that as a minimum must be met, the application falls within the category specifically accepted in the ordinance or grant of a special permit. And it, it does fall within a category specifically accepted in the ordinance. The site plan review is not required for a single family. Wait a minute.
We can just note that it did have a site plan review on January twenty seventh, twenty twenty two. It did go to site review. And there, and there's a letter in the file.
Right. And after evaluation, while the office presented the proposal fulfills the spirit intent of the zoning ordinance and would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. And we've already covered that. Those are my findings.
Our roll call vote in approving the special permit as found by Paul Herb Bodensee.
I'm in favor.
Open hard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
Sorry, I'm in favor.
And I'm also in favor. And then again, Paul, there's some special conditions.
Right. I, I have one through five on this one. Was there an update or is, is that accurate?
Uh, there is a sixth. Uh, there is a sixth, um, Anna, which one is is the update, which which um?
January twenty, January twenty-fourth.
The added condition is exactly the same as in the variance. It's referencing the D R I and bringing that those conditions in to the town.
Oh, okay, it's number five, uh, all conditions set forth in the Cape Cod Commission Development of Regional Impact Decision recorded at the Registry of Deeds book three, five, five, four, zero, page seven, three are hereby incorporated into this decision.
Thanks, Mark. Those are my findings. Or conditions, that okay with you?
All right, wrong.
Attorney Perry, you've seen these?
I have seen those with the added one, yes.
Okay.
And they're fine.
All right, and so um roll call vote, Herb Boden Sieg?
I am in favor.
Paul Pinnard?
In favor.
Mark Hanson?
In favor.
Aaron Webb?
In favor.
And I am also in favor. Uh, so Attorney Par, you have your variant and your special permit.
Thank you, and and I do appreciate the uh the cooperation eh with the board and paying attention, I know this was a complicated uh situation uh with a lot of, you know, details, a lot of legal issues, so I do appreciate everyone's attention and how uh the reasonableness of all participants throughout the hearing, and a thank you for processing my numerous emails, uh, and we do appreciate the the board's approval, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so moving on to our new business. Uh, in appeal number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero five, T J A Clean Energy, as Lacy has applied for a modification uh modification permit pursuant to section two forty-eight, A three B modification from section two forty, forty-four, two E three dimensional requirements, section two forty, forty-four, two F to special permit provisions, the applicant proposes to construct a large-scale ground-mounted solar ballistic insulation pursuant to section two forty, forty-four, two E three of the zoning ordinance. The proposed setback for the solar array is sixteen feet from undeveloped land on the westerly side of the property where a hundred feet is required, the subject property is located eight-ten Wakeby Road, Marson's Mills, Mass. Uh, so this map as the uh part zero one three as parcels zero, zero, four, zero, zero, five, and zero, five, two, it's located in the residence F R F zoning district. Um, so sitting on this will be all all of our members present, Herb, Paul Pinnard, Mark Hanson, Aaron Webb, and myself. Um, we have had some communication over this, um, is Attorney Ford here?
Uh, I I am, can you hear me, Mister Chairman?
Yes.
So we're, I'm having.
I can hear you, I don't see you because maybe you're on the other screen.
Yeah, so I'm having internet problems, so um they suggested that I I call in, so uh, I'm actually on a phone line speaking to you at at the moment, but I'm I'm keeping track of of the meeting on another device as well, so my apologies, but um I I think I can hear everything going on and I can see, um, so I I think I can proceed if if you believe you can hear me.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, a a point of.
You can hear you, yeah.
We received a letter from the uh town attorney.
Yep, yep, I I just wanted to have, I wanted to to have Attorney Ford speak to it and just, you know, make a decision here as a board if we want what we want to do, there's a lot of members of the public here as well right now, um. So Attorney Ford, I believe you received that letter uh um that Attorney McLaughlin had sent over, um.
I did, uh, yes, I I did receive it. Mister McLaughlin did call me, I spoke to him on the phone. His suggestion was not that we don't open the hearing and go forward. Uh, my understanding was that um he knew we were going forward, would have a full evidentiary uh hearing this evening. Uh, both the applicant and the public who was on, uh, but the board would continue it until your next meeting. Um, so that the town attorney's office could provide some assistance with respect to findings, um, options uh that the board would need to consider uh and vote on at their next meeting. So that that's how I understand the letter, that was the conversation with Attorney McLaughlin.
I I I agree, but I I do want to make sure that our members of the board, because we all received the letter, it was addressed to all of us, um, we feel comfortable moving forward, so let's just take a quick poll, Paul, Paul, what's your thoughts here?
Yeah, I I've given certainly the number of of citizens that are on the call here, we should uh proceed with the hearing. Um, but I do want to defer to the town attorney.
Yes, um, Aaron? Any issues moving forward tonight with, you know, we won't make a decision tonight, but to continue the hearing?
Uh, no, other, other than it's just going to continue on to the next hearing, so we're just, uh, I I wish that these things would get themselves worked out in advance so we can hear it and make a decision to move on, but not tonight, so let's hear it and hear it again.
Mark?
Uh, I'm fine moving forward, I think we have a lot of members of the public here, I'd like to just allow them opportunity.
Herb?
I'd like to just um leave the whole thing till April twelfth, which is what um Attorney McLaughlin recommended. That will be a public hearing at the um uh town hall, um. Uh, it's not the uh town counselor's room anymore, it's um whatever, uh, but I I think it's important.
But okay, but but Herb, we're not going to close public comments tonight, I think we'll leave it open, so I think we we proceed and and we'll let be about people an opportunity to speak in person at the the next meeting.
Okay, I'd I'd like to leave the majority of the um discussion until April twelfth.
I concur with Herb one hundred percent, I again, I I understand that the the room is full of folks that wish to speak and and I guess we can hear them um tonight. Uh, I I feel terrible that it's come to this, but to have two multiple discussions over the course of several weeks is um, you know, just unfortunate, but.
Yeah, and this is one of the most contentious. Uh, one of the most contentious uh issues we've had before us uh with the most unhappy uh citizens, which is who we work for as far as I'm concerned, and I I think to leave as much as possible till April twelfth is really desirable.
But Herb, I I argue the other way around, I think if we, I think some of these issues when we we have this many members of the public concerned about it should have two meetings, one in person and one online, because not everyone can get to this online system, um. So I personally think that, you know, that was why I proposed that we do one meeting a month in person, one meeting online. And unfortunately, this meeting was supposed to be in person, but there was a scheduling at town hall issue, so we were not able to be in person.
Well, there's also.
I I would propose that we move.
Council meetings are Zoom and um public uh at the town council hearing room. So maybe we can do that on April twelfth, but this is a a seriously contentious issue, and I don't think that can be adequately portrayed by the interested parties uh that is the abutters um on Zoom, um, that's just me, but.
Well, 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 when we open public comment, well, well, I'll say it now that we're agreeing, we're not going to make a, we're not going to make findings tonight, um, and so people that are here on Zoom now would rather speak on the twelfth. They have that op, we'll guarantee they're going to have that opportunity to speak then, and so they can save their comments until that time if they prefer, um, if they prefer to speak tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
That's fine.
So let's move forward, Attorney Ford, yeah?
Yeah, Mister Chairman, could I ask one question?
Go ahead, Mark.
My understanding was that um the hearing, uh, if it went forward tonight, and obviously that's your decision, not Mister McLaughlin's or ours um, uh, as a board, was uh going to continue two weeks from tonight, not in April. We are scheduled to be before the planning board for our special permit on March twenty-seventh. And uh we were told that uh if it was continued tonight, it would simply be continued until uh March twenty-second, not into the middle of April.
Anna, do you have any, where are we scheduling live as even, do we have for our March end?
The two March meetings are Zoom, and then the first meeting in April is in person.
And do we have, how busy is our schedule on both those dates?
Um, the twenty-second of March has two items on and April twelfth, I believe, maybe Jenna can help me on this, um. I think there's a hand, maybe three old businesses are on the agenda.
I thought it was only one, let me just double check quickly.
Oh, went, what, so there's two, Wentworth.
That's right, Wentworth and um Viewlemere.
Right, so there's two old businesses on April twelfth.
Okay.
So two and two.
I I I'm inclined to start this tonight unless anyone from the board objects to it, and we can decide when we get to the point of, after we hear public comment, um, if we push it to the twelfth to have in person. Um, and from the conversations I've had with staff, I don't think Attorney Ford, it's, uh, you know, you could go to planning board without our decision. So I I'm, if you're comfortable with your technology, the Attorney Ford, I think we can move for ready to proceed now tonight with your presentation.
Yeah, no, I I I think we would, if that's the board's desire, uh, we certainly would uh move forward tonight, um, I I'm comfortable as long as you can hear me, Mister Chairman.
When, then my question is, what date would be the continuance?
I think that's going to be a discussion we have to have as a board after we hear Attorney Ford's presentation and we hear from members of the public. I know where I sit on that, but that's, that'll be a vote between the five of us.
Okay, Mister Chairman, I think in situations like this, when we had something like said this before, we oftentimes get valuable information during these first sessions that, you know, can bring up additional questions or or, you know, that something right might require additional research or something along that line, so I I think it's better to go forward tonight.
Yeah, I think, let's go forward, Attorney Ford, if you're ready, let's, you know, move it along.
I am, thank you, Mister Chairman, so uh for the record, Attorney Michael Ford, I'm here representing a T J A Clean Energy. They are a less see of of the property um located uh at eight-ten Wakeby Road. Uh, the property owner is Wakeby um Road Realty Inc., a corporation. Um, and so our standing uh to be before you is as less see um of the property. We've applied, uh, Mister Chairman, for a a modification permit, so-called under uh section two forty dash eight um of the ordinance. Um, little use section, I've been before the board on it uh many years ago um for a a different type of exempt use, but basically you first have to show that what you're proposing is an exempt use. Them uses are those uh defined in chapter forty-eight, section three. And uh chapter forty-eight, section three, as I indicated in my application uh uh protects uh the installation of solar energy systems or the building of structures uh that facilitate the collection of solar energy. And uh specifically provides that no zoning ordinance shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate uh the installation of uh those facilities. And so um this is a use as proposed that qualifies under chapter forty-eight, uh, section three and allows us to bring a uh modification permit. The modification permit standard is different than a variance standard, and it's different than a special permit standard. What the applicant has to show, uh, Mister Chairman, is that um without the modification uh that we seek um, the regulation which we seek the modification from would substantially diminish or detract from the usefulness of the proposed development or impair the character of the development so as to affect its intended use. Provided, the modification of the bulk regulation will not create a public safety hazard along adjacent roadways and will not create a nuisance to other surrounding properties, and they define a nuisance such that it would impair the use of those properties. So it's kind of a unique standard, and um the bylaw itself actually directs the Board of Appeals uh to issue the modification permit if they make these findings. Uh, it uses the language uh shall, of the Board of Appeals shall modify. So um finally, it it sets a different quantum of of vote rather than a typical four out of five that you need to get uh an extraordinary majority in order to qualify for a special permit or a variance, a modification permit is a simple majority of those uh present and voting of the board. So um, this is a different standard, uh, kind of a little bit different set of rules. Um, and I think in order for us to uh give you the facts that you need uh in order to make the findings that I just referred to uh generally in in the ordinance um, we need to tell you something about uh the project itself. And so with me tonight is Brendan Reali, he's an environmental scientist uh with uh Atlantic Design Engineers. Atlantic is the site engineer uh for the property, and they have prepared the plans. And um uh, this particular project has a very long history, I've been involved in it on behalf of T J A for a number of years um in uh appearing before various um uh boards and the town council. Uh, last fall, the council in their wisdom amended both the zoning ordinance and the zoning map so that the site at eight-ten Wakeby Road um while it, the underlying zoning is still RF residential and the groundwater overlay district is still G P, groundwater protection. It now uh also lies within the solar overlay district where a a use uh such as this is permitted. Distinction here is because the underlying zone is residential, the new solar overlay bylaw requires uh the issuance of a special permit. And thus, we have also applied for a special permit um from the planning board as the ordinance uh directs. They're the special permit granting authority in this, so in in granting a modification permit, if the uh board uh sees fit to do that, it does not grant this project. You're not voting as to whether or not to allow the uh solar array project to go forward. That rests with the planning board, and we need to satisfy all the requirements of the special permit provisions of the overlay district and uh get the um special permit uh from the planning board before this project could go forward. The overlay district also requires us to go to site plan review, we've been there, we have a conditional approval which you have in your file. Um, the only outstanding issue uh in the site plan approval uh was further review and approval of the access roads uh by the fire department. I can tell you that we have reached an an a, an agreement with um the Senate of Lostville, Marson's Mills Fire District uh with respect to those access roads, and the plan will be amended to show rather than, as we propose a twelve-foot access road, they would like a twenty-foot access road. And so that change will be made um to the plans, um. That uh agreement with a comm uh just took place uh the first part of this week. So um, I think we're, we certainly have standing to go forward tonight uh on all of those fronts. Project has also been before the Cape Cod Commission, and the Cape Cod Commission made a determination that no uh review was necessary as a development of regional impact. And they made that decision based on their change of use standard, Mister Chairman, the change of use standard is is the proposed use uh going to have uh substantially different impacts on the resources that the Cape Cod Commission is charged with protection uh than the proposed use, and they made a determination that it was not. Um, and you'll hear more about the existing use when I turn this over to um Brendan Reality Rally, and this is probably a good time to do it where he can kind of walk you through the existing conditions, um, the permitting history, the proposed plan, um and the details regarding the proposed plan, uh, and then he'll uh with your permission uh send it back to me uh to walk you through the findings that we would suggest you can make with respect to the modification permit. So uh with that, I think um uh Mister Reali has a um slide deck um of a few slides to uh walk the board through, um. I think we've made arrangements for him to be able to share his screen, Mister Chairman. Um, I think we've made arrangements for him to be able to share his screen, Mr. Chairman. Um, if you would allow him to commence at this point.
All right.
Yep, um, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, like Attorney Ford said, my name is Brendan Realy from Atlantic Design Engineers. Uh, representing the applicant TJ Clean Energy. And let me, uh, hopefully everybody can see this. Let me know if you can't. Now, try to get this started. So, uh, I apologize, some of this, uh, has already been mentioned by Attorney Ford, um, but I would try to keep this as short and sweet as possible. Um, basic outline of what this presentation will, um. Include will be existing conditions, uh, approvals and determinations obtained prior to this meeting. And a technical summary of the proposed project. At that time, I'll turn it back over to Attorney Ford to, uh, address the modification permit. So the, uh, site is approximately nineteen point three acres. Of land identified as A ten Wakeby Road, um, as shown as parcels four, five, and fifty-two on Barnstable Assessor Map thirteen. Uh, the site is owned by Wakeby Road Realty and is located to the north of Wakeby Road within, uh, residential F zoning district. As mentioned, is also located within the groundwater protection overlay district, a resource protection overlay district. And it's mapped on the town of Barnstable zoning map. This, uh, site presently consists of mostly clear disturbed interior with a light to moderate tree cover along the edges of the site's boundaries. Uh, existing topography is variable, but generally slopes down on all sides to several natural depressions or excavated depressions within the center of the site. This topography is the result of the site's historical use as a sand and gravel quarry. Um, a wetland review of the site was completed by Wendell Wetland Services, uh, on October twenty-third, twenty nineteen. No wetlands were identified. And the Town of Barnstable Conservation Commission issued a negative determination of applicability in November twenty nineteen. The site also, uh, does lie within a mass BP zone two and a sole source aquifer based on a review of mass GIS. Uh, there's no estimated habitats, uh, priority habitats of rare species or estimated habitats of rare wildlife. Uh, it's not within a FEMA flood zone and is not within an area of critical environment that would share. All right, and, uh, a lot of these were mentioned already, but some, uh, approvals and terminations that were obtained prior to tonight's meeting. Uh, FAA determination of no hazard to air navigation received in October twenty twenty-one. Uh, Cape Cod Commission change of use termination. Um, which concluded the proposed outdoor solar use does not present a change in the nature of the existing outdoor use on the property. And accordingly, does not require mandatory DRI review by Cape Cod Commission. Um, as mentioned, the, uh, determination, the negative determination of applicability by Barnstable Concom. And, uh, also as mentioned, the, uh, formal site plan, um, was, uh, approved with conditions. Uh, so the proposed brown mounted solar installation will produce approximately four point nine nine megawatts of AC of clean electricity to the grid. The project will encompass ten point two six acres within a chain link perimeter of security fence. The security fence will include locked access gate with Knox box for fire department access and emergency contact, uh, sign. Uh, the project will require minimal tree clearing due to its existing conditions, since the project is proposing only two concrete equipment pads. A gravel access road and beneath the solar modules remain grass, i.e. pervious. This will be a minimum increase in impervious area. The proposed project equipment includes, uh, solar modules, security fence, stormwater measures, gravel access road transformers, electrical inverters. Uh, racking system and above and below ground electrical infrastructure which will interconnect to existing utility lines located. Adjacent to the site on Wakeby Road. Uh, the project will not include a battery storage system. Uh, access for the construction and future maintenance would be via an existing dirt road located, located off of Wakeby Road. The, uh, access be constructed, um, I'm sorry, the dirt construction and temporary stone tracking pad would be utilized as an entrance to the site. As mentioned, a majority of the law is currently cleared due to previous sand and gravel removal operations. Um, and those historical operations created existing topography which directs runoff towards the interior of the property. Uh, accordingly, I know our grading has followed the existing contours to mimic existing runoff patterns. Uh, as you may be able to see, these are going to be the locations are, are proposed. Uh, infiltration basins. Uh, the proposed stormwater system is primarily an open drainage system comprised of three infiltration basins. Which will fully capture and infiltrate runoff generated on the site, um, up to the hundred year storm event. These basins were positioned in natural low areas, um, in the north, central and southern portions of the site. Additionally, erosion control. And, uh, stormwater measures were designed in accordance with mass DP stormwater management policy in the town of Barnstable Stormwater Management Program. No runoff will be directed offsite. Also, as mentioned, we will be on the, uh, on the western, north and southern sides of the property. We are adhering to a hundred fifty foot, uh, setback from residentially developed properties. So this area right in here, it's a hundred and fifty feet. Uh, additionally, a berm and vegetative screening will be constructed along the eastern boundary of the project to screen the array from abundant properties. The, this dark line is representing. Is representing the, uh, vegetative screening and this area in here is a screening berm. And at this time, I'll hand it back off to, uh, Attorney Ford to finish the presentation.
Uh, thank you, uh, Brendan. Mr. Chairman, may I proceed?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. So, uh, again, to bring us back to the narrow issue that is, um, before your board. Um, and we're dealing with, uh, the ordinance section two forty dash eight. And, um, uh, the language, um, of that particular, uh, section is three B is the operative section. But I think it's important to focus on what it is we're seeking a modification of. Um, Brendan, if you can put, uh, uh, the, have you got the modification slide up? You do, okay.
Yep.
So, um, the area that is shaded, uh, in kind of a light red. Is the area of the array that would be, um, eliminated. Uh, if we, um, do not get the modification that, that we're seeking. The underlying zoning setback in this area for RF is fifteen. So we meet that setback, but we don't meet the hundred foot, uh, setback. That is imposed under the, um, town's overlay district. I think it's important, um, to examine, um, uh, the language of the overlay district. As it lays out, uh, the hundred foot setback. And, uh, I'm looking, Mr. Chairman, at, at, um, the overlay district, which is at two forty dash forty-four point two. And I'm, uh, looking at, uh, section F, the special permit provisions, uh, paragraph two. And that paragraph starts off by saying adequate measures to contain and suppress noise and sound. As deemed appropriate by the planning board. Um, including but not limited to, and then it sets off, uh, sets out the, the setback requirements. Um, of which this is one. And so it, it appears that the setbacks, which are, uh, uh, much greater than other setbacks in other areas of town. Um, I have their genesis in, uh, noise. Um, solar panels don't make noise. Um, and so that's why it's, it's a rare that you see a, a, a solar panel facility with the setbacks that. Um, are contained, um, in this particular ordinance. Um, there are, uh, two inverters that are part of the project. Um, that make some noise, but I'm told that you really need to be standing right next to it to hear any noise from an inverter. One of those is in the, um, uh, north, uh, western corner of the site. And the other's in the, um, uh, southern, uh, corner of the site. Um, as you enter, uh, from Wakeby Road. Neither one is anywhere near, uh, a, uh, developed residential lot. So, um, the standard that we have to meet, um, under, uh, three B. Is, uh, to show you that, um, if we don't get the modification. It will substantially diminish is what we're suggesting. It says or detract. We'd suggest it's diminish. The usefulness of the proposed development. And Atlantic has given you some metrics there, uh, on this slide. Um, the shaded area that, that would be eliminated is, um, almost two thousand modules. Twenty-two and a half percent of, of the entire output of, of the solar array. Um, it includes over two acres of, of land. And so, um, I'd suggest to you respectfully that that would meet the standard of, uh. Substantial diminishment, um, of the use of the facility. Um, the other, uh, uh, factual issue I'd, I'd like to bring out here is that. As this project has proceeded over the last several years through various reviews and, and then the zoning change. Um, the land that, uh, we're seeking the reduced setback from has been purchased by the town of Barnstable. So all of that land on that westerly side is in one owner. It's in the town of Barnstable, and it was purchased for watershed purposes. And so will not be developed. There will be no, um, houses there, even though it continues to be zoned, uh, RF. So again, uh, given the fact that the genesis of the, uh, increased setback, uh, was noise and sound. Um, I, I would suggest that you could, uh, make the additional finding required under three B, uh, uh. To issue the modification, and that is that it won't create a public safety hazard. Certainly along adjacent roadways, there isn't any roadway that is near the area that we're seeking to be modified. Uh, so that one's really not applicable. Uh, that's the language of the ordinance. And then will not create a nuisance to other surrounding properties such that it will impair the use of those properties. And I'd, uh, suggest that, um, during the underlying zoning setback of fifteen feet or sixteen feet, um. Uh, for the array, uh, will not in any way, uh, impair the use of the town property. Uh, which is to remain in its natural state as watershed protection. So I, I think that, um, as shown by this slide, with respect to the setback modification we're seeking. Um, uh, the, the, the slide is demonstrative evidence of, of the, um. Meeting the criteria that you need to apply in three B. The other area where we've applied for a modification arises frankly out of some. Of the language in the, uh, overlay district that is a bit ambiguous. And that is, um, the fact that, uh, the proposed berms. That, uh, Brendan sho- showed you on the prior plan. That, uh, are required under the bylaw i- in order to, uh, uh, screen. Uh, the array from the developed, uh, portions of, of the butters properties. Uh, and the, uh, plantings. Um, there is some question when you read the bylaws to whether, uh, that can be done. Within the hundred and fifty foot setback. There is language in F, uh, two that says you can't have any other changes in the setback. Um, that has to remain in its natural state. Um, unless reviewed and approved by the permit granting authority. So there's an implication there that perhaps the planning board has the right. Um, to authorize under that section, under the special permit. Um, what is required in other areas of the bylaw, and that is to, to berm where necessary and screen. Um, the developed residential, uh, portions of the property. Uh, it would make little sense if that would be outside the setback area of the hundred and fifty feet. So out of an abundance of caution, we've applied for a modification of that to the extent, Mr. Chairman, that the planning board finds it necessary. Uh, they may decide in reading it on, with the special permit, that they believe they have the authority. Um, to not only allow, but to require, um, uh, the berms and the landscaping. Uh, to fill the spirit and ten of the bylaw within the buffer zone to screen, uh, the butters. Finally, there are a couple of areas, uh, again on that easterly side. Where the, uh, fire access road is within the hundred and fifty foot, uh, setback. Um, again, um, the same reasoning applies. Uh, it, it appears that, um, the, uh, planning board, uh, has a right to make changes in that area. Uh, provided they're reviewed and approved by them. Which would, uh, include the fire access road, which on this plan, uh, Mr. Chairman and members is shown as twelve feet. Fire department in their wisdom has decided they need twenty feet. And so the road would, uh, uh, move, uh, towards the easterly boundary line, that additional eight feet. And the fence would move, uh, with the road. Um, the panels, the solar array itself would continue to be a hundred and fifty feet. Uh, from those lots that are, uh, currently, uh, developed. Again, um, uh, I'd suggest that while, uh, the planning board may, uh, read the special permit provisions of the bylaw. Uh, expansively, since this will be the first special permit under it, we don't really know. And suggest that, uh, they can approve the access road within the buffer zone. Again, Mr. Chairman, out of an abundance of caution, I've added that to my, uh, modification, uh, request. And I would ask you that, to the extent that the planning board finds it necessary, that you make that finding, uh, as well. Um, again, I think that finding can, uh, easily be made. Um, uh, without, uh. Because there is no public safety issue, uh, with respect to those things. In fact, the berm and the, and the landscaping. Are things that the bylaw, uh, requires for the benefit of the adjoining properties. Uh, not anything that would impair the use of those properties, uh. So, um, I think the last time I was before this, uh, board for a modification permit was. Uh, well over ten years ago, um, maybe fifteen, if I remember specifically, it was for the science building out at Cape Cod Academy. And, uh, it was allowed to, um, go higher than the bylaw allowed at the time. And that's the last time I've, I've come in on a modification permit. So it's not something that, uh, I have a great deal of experience in. I don't know how many have actually been filed with the town over the years, but, um. I, I think the purpose behind the modification permit provision is that chapter forty A, section three, uh, provides, uh. Very permissive language when it comes to exempt uses. Uh, just as it says, uh, as I quoted and is in my narrative, is, is attached to my application, that zoning ordinances can't prohibit. Or unreasonably, uh, regulate, um, solar, uh, facilities and other exempt uses. And that's why the town in its wisdom has put this provision in and, uh, provided this test. Allowed a, a, uh, eligible use, exempt use under forty-eight-three to come forward and make their case. Um, as to why, uh, complying with it, uh, a particular dimensional regulation. Um, would indeed, uh, result in, um, substantial diminishment of the usefulness, uh, of the use. So, um, that's our, that's our position. That's our argument, Mr. Chairman. Um, we respectfully suggest that, uh, uh, you can, uh, make the necessary findings to, that we are eligible for the modification permit. And then allow the planning board to decide, uh, whether we meet the requirements, uh, for a special permit. Happy to take questions.
Thank you, Attorney Ford. Um, does any of our board members have questions?
Just have one quick one, Mr. Chairman.
Just have one quick one, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mark.
And I'm not sure who's best to answer this. So what's before us is about 1,992 modules that would not be included should the should the special permit or should the modification not be approved? Is there a monetary value annually for those for those modules, even a ballpark figure?
I'm sure there is, Mark. I don't have it. And in fact, I don't know whether the project's even feasible without them. But I'm happy to inquire and get that information back to you.
Thank you.
I saw the test as one where we had to show that the failure to get the modification would impair substantially, excuse me, diminish the usefulness of it. I can understand why you're asking about a monetary amount, and I'd be happy to get whatever information I can and report back at whatever continued hearing your board has, Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Ford. Yeah, I mean, what's before us here is would this substantially diminish or detract from the usefulness of the proposed development? So you know, that's that's left up to our judgment here in a way. It's not very clear a percentage or a number of what is substantial or not. Aaron, do you have any thoughts or questions?
Sorry, I don't at this time. I'm ingesting digesting as much of the information as I can. Thanks.
Paul Herb, Paul, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I have two questions. Attorney Ford, is there a height? With all the equipment that's going to be there in these two stations, is there a how high is the highest point of this stuff?
Yeah, so I defer to Brendan. I think Brendan can probably answer that question, if he might, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, roughly between eight feet. Seven to nine feet typically.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you. The second question I have is right now, there's quite a junkyard there. Those are my words, my words. Will any of that or all of that be removed?
The proposal is that yes, the site would be cleaned up. And there is a provision in the special permit process and in the special permit provisions of the overlay district that can allow and condition any approval that all existing other uses of the property be abandoned or discontinued as a condition of approval. So we anticipate that that would be the case.
Thank you.
In fact, in fact, I think in your staff report, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just for the modification permit, staff has suggested that that type of condition be placed in your modification permit as well.
Yes, it was.
To which we do not have an objection.
Paul, do you have another question? Is that it?
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Herb, any questions for you, from you?
I probably have a lot. The 150-foot buffer zone to actually put any kind of access roads or anything through that is just shouldn't be considered. I'd rather wait till the next hearing to really say anything. The history of this whole site, it's so contentious that I don't think the neighbors are really being considered. I think the Butters should be the number one concern. And the fact that TJI sued the town of Barnstable in order even get this special district established, and now they're going to come back and ask for favors. Anyway, I'll wait till next time, but I really don't like the whole smell of this whole thing, but thank you.
Okay, Attorney Ford, I've got two questions for you. The abutting town land, you said that's watershed? So I see it, I didn't pull the deed on it, but I see it as municipal land. Is there a deed restriction that that will never be developed in perpetuity?
I'm not sure there's any deed restriction. I was informed that it was taken for watershed protection purposes. Certainly, we can get the deed and any restriction on it.
Mr. Chairman. Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, there is a restriction on it. I'm happy to provide that to the board before their next meeting.
Okay. So Calm Water doesn't own it. The town owns it, municipal.
The town owns the land, and my understanding is the restriction is held by both potentially the Land Trust and Calm Water as as this was a restriction through a grant for the protection of drinking water.
Okay. And so I guess to that point, could we get some sort of feedback from Calm that, you know, they feel that there is no environmental impact of having these things there, you know? If the applicant is arguing that there's no impact to the public, but yet the land was was preserved for the public interest here, I would just hope that we could get whoever owns the land or whoever is sort of, you know, spearheaded that to give us some sort of documentation saying that they as a Butters feel comfortable.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add to that, that not only the project itself, but not to dilute it and the ongoing maintenance of the project once the project, if the project is running.
Yeah, I mean, they have to provide a repair bond or removal bond. And then Attorney Ford.
Sorry, go ahead.
Attorney Ford, my other question was just has an environmental study been done to the existing property before we cover it with a solar array?
Yeah, I'll defer to Brendan. I think Atlantic is aware of what has occurred on the existing site with respect to cleanup and tests.
As far as I'm aware, there was a cleanup completed through Mass DAP. That was completed a while ago though, so I have to go back and look at it. This was talking probably late 80s, early 90s. As far as any I guess, could you repeat your question specifically? You asked that there's an environmental review of the property done?
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, go ahead.
He was asking whether Brendan, there has been a recent environmental assessment of the property to determine whether or not it's clean before the panels are installed. That was his question, I think. Was that it, Mr. Chairman?
Correct, yes.
So there was testing completed on the site to as far as background levels and groundwater. But that was kind of limited to fill that they were bringing in. As far as any other environmental assessment, we, there is a phase one environmental through ASTM standards, but that doesn't involve testing. That's just purely a desktop review, interviews, compiling of documentation. But the groundwater testing that was completed was limited to specific analytes that were regarding the fill that they were going to be bringing on site.
I think, Mr. Chairman, the DEP did issue a closure plan for the property. They did an inspection and a closure plan. But I've just made a note on my list of things that you're asking for, and we'll make sure that we get you that for the next hearing as well.
Yeah, I would just request that be submitted. You know what the plan was, what was completed and if any, any recent environmental reports and studies have been done. All right, Sam Elton, the board, have any questions or comments before we open to public comment? I think just I'm not asking for anyone to say any opinions, just straight questions of fact or things you'd request that the applicant provide for our potential next hearing. All right, seeing none, I will open for.
Sorry, I was a little slow there. I'd like to hear from the COMM Fire Department as well as far as emergency services goes. I think I read in here somewhere that there will not be any battery storage, which is probably the largest concern. But I'd like to kind of hear from the fire department, which we haven't heard, and I think Mark mentioned that the water department really hasn't said anything. So I would like to hear from those two public agencies. Thank you.
All right. Let's see, so I guess for public comment here, we'll start from top down. So I have Ann Salas. You just say your name and, oh, sorry, David, go ahead.
I had a list of people that came in.
Oh, you have a list?
Yeah, so there was a Cody Jones in here. I don't know if he is still in this meeting. I guess we can go back to him. The next person was Ann Salas. So now is your time to make a public comment. And state your name and address for the record, please.
Ann Salas, 145 Mockingbird Lane, Marston Mills. I am in a butter. September 2019 DEP letter states that the land is tested and clean. A copy of that letter is in my emails to you. TGA, TJ is suing our town, and for that reason, the town already have made huge modifications to our bylaws. Now they want to modify the modifications, TGA, so that the access road berm and screening will be within the 150-foot setbacks to our homes. It would no longer be a setback. It defeats the purpose of a setback and is absolutely unacceptable. The 16-foot setback TJ asks to be reduced from 100 feet is public wellhead protection restriction land owned by the town. The topography from historic mining operations will direct runoff at an extreme angle to these public water wells supplying water to 30,000 people. The electricity generated by this installation will serve about 600 people, according to Atlantic Design. At least twice that many people living in this community will be adversely affected by this installation, even with 150 setbacks. Try selling a house next to it. The requests violate the intentions of our bylaws that were painstakingly written by our legal and planning departments over six months to protect the health, safety, and the chimera of peace in our homes with a 21-acre industrial-scale electric power plant 150 feet from our homes. The usefulness of the project that Mr. Ford refers to really means the profitability of it for TGA. The more solar panels, the more profitability. Please study the maps and the dangers of these installations and the info I've supplied in my emails. I hope you have the time to do that. Town Attorney McLaughlin's request to stay your decision is no doubt to allow time to study these facts and to advise you of important truths. The access road will be used all day during the long months of construction and then by Eversource, who will acquire ownership of the installation and will spray glyphosate every year. The road currently lies immediately adjacent to our properties, our property lines. Trees need to be watered twice a week for two years to survive. They likely won't be planted until the project is completed. They'll be left to die because no one will be there to water them. If Mr. Florence didn't take action to stop 15,000 tons of ocean dredging spoils from being illegally dumped at that Zone 2 groundwater protection property 810, would he respond to reports that screening trees are dead? I doubt it. The only hope of meaningful screening will be trees growing back naturally over the next 20 years within a 150-foot setback. None of you live here. You won't experience the daily torment. But for just a moment, please imagine the nightmare that will be ours for the next 30 years. Imagine your children playing outside when unannounced, as always, Eversource arrives to spray deadly glyphosate every year. And this will all be going down into the extreme angle right towards the water protection conservation restriction land owned by the town. TJ do not need the extra profit these modifications would give them. It would be used to sue other towns for the right to poison other water systems and communities. The Supreme Judicial Court's recent decision does give municipalities greater ability to protect the health, safety, and welfare of its communities and natural resources under MGL Chapter 48, Section 3. I beg you to please use that greater flexibility. Vote no to these modifications, and we thank you on behalf of our children for voting no.
Thank you, Ms. Salas. David, do you have a next person to speak? David, are you there?
Yes, it's a C. McDonough. Now is your time to make public comment and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Catherine McDonough, speaking on behalf of the McDonough family at 111 Mockingbird Lane. We are also Butters. Keeping my camera off just for connectivity purposes. Though I have not yet had the pleasure of speaking to you, some of you know my family and our neighbors' shared situation. The last time this property was before you in May of 2021, my father spoke to you about illegal activities that have persisted on this property for decades despite superior and Supreme Court rulings. And now this landowner stands to profit yet again from his continued illicit actions. The land, by the way, is not clear now because of its previous misuse. It has not been used for sand and gravel for almost 20 years. All of that vegetation had grown back. We had mature trees back there. We even saw bald eagles until a couple summers ago, when the landowner clear-cut it yet again so that his attorneys could falsely claim that it just so happened to be appropriate for solar. My family has been opposing this endeavor for years and have been before the planning board and town council, who have heard and understood our concerns and reservations regarding this project. And both entities have repeatedly assured us that the amended solar overlay ordinance that they worked very hard to develop and which we very much appreciate would not only set a precedent for all other overreaches of this nature, but would protect us from the type of large-scale commercial operation that is currently proposed. I asked then, and will ask again now, how good is the amendment to the ordinance that's supposed to protect us if it can later be amended or modification permits can be granted to circumvent it? We understand the need to not unreasonably regulate solar, but what about not profiting off of illegal actions as judged by the Supreme Judicial Court? The very things that made this land considered suitable for solar in the first place, despite a long history of residential zoning. And a reason that further change to the ordinance is being requested. That land was so severely and dangerously overdug that they now want an emergency access road to be within the setback that is supposed to be completely free of motorized vehicles because otherwise they wouldn't be capable of driving safely around the property. And what about protecting our groundwater? When my father brought up the tragic deposit of dredge soils to you guys in 2021, member Bodenseek said that, quote, "As a soils professional, this is a sacrilege to me," end quote. If dumping naturally occurring dredge spoils is sacrilege, I'm very curious about what the installation of toxic man-made materials would constitute. For over a month now, we've seen footage of the uncontrollable train fire that unfortunately has ruined East Palestine, Ohio, and have been forced to imagine the kind of devastation we might endure if this kind of large-scale array ever malfunctions as others of its kind have. Years ago, my fiancee and I were approved for a home loan. We considered properties on and off the Cape, but decided to remain here in Barnstable and to instead invest in my childhood home because of its distance from commercial enterprise, because of its tranquility and its abundance of nature. And now a giant buzzing, insect-killing, native species-restricting, wildlife-displacing, vegetation-destroying, illegally-proffiting enterprise is poised to be constructed in our backyard. You guys have been here. There are severe angles and gradients, and we'll be able to see it all, no matter where the fence is constructed. We implore you to uphold the solar overlay ordinance as it is written and to not allow TGA to strong-arm its way into our neighborhood. If the solar project isn't feasible within the current ordinance, then it should not be allowed to proceed, and the fact that TGA is suing And the fact that T J A is suing our town in an attempt to have you disregard what is best for our residents and our environment means they are not green for the good of our community, but green solely for a profit. Thank you sincerely for your time.
Thank you very much. David, go ahead.
Uh, somebody logged on as Ryan. Uh, Ryan's iPhone, maybe. Uh, now is your time to make public comment and state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, yes. My name is Ryan Militia. I'm sitting here with my wife Kelly Militia. We're at twenty-three Doves Lane. We are in a butter at the back side of that pit. Uh, we are both Cape natives and we grew up in this town. Um, we're happy to be in this neighborhood and we're happy for the two individuals that did a lot better preparing than I did, but I just have a couple of basic questions to piggyback on Herb's comment about calm. I I'm wondering, has calm the fire department been trained for the the worst case scenario of a solar field fire? Just something that I I know that maybe that's a silly question, but just want to know. Couple other things. I mean, it's kind of funny that if, you know, I guess what are the purposes of a watershed property that it is? It's going to be a budding. It's, um, it, you know, it's kind of silly to call it a watershed property and then have something being sprayed like glyphosate all over the place. Uh, what's pretty much just spraying it onto the other property. And then the the buffer thing is is really, it's a, it's a nice attempt, but planting trees, uh, it's really just a seasonal buffer. When you really think about it, it's not gonna, it's not gonna block anything. It's just a pile of dirt and some trees that hopefully make it through, but it doesn't sound like they'll they'll have a chance. And the, um, the research that was done for the short duration fires, I I was just kind of, I wanted to the Atlantic and Atlantic Engineering, I wanted to get kind of a better explanation at what what is the short duration fires that they used for the research against? Uh, it it, where are the fires coming from? Is it an outside fire like a forest fire? Encroaching and starting fire at the solar field or is it the solar field that started the fire that they're doing, they're they're using for these? The research, whether it's burning at a high enough temperature because it's a, it's a forest fire or is it an electrical fire? Because there's a huge difference between uh, wood burning and uh, electricity. So that is it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. David, next person?
Uh, Debbie Lav. I don't know how to pronounce your last name. Now is your time to speak and state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Oh, hi. My name is Debbie Lavoy. I live on Bay Head Road. I had not intended on speaking. However, I am, uh, I live in Long Pond. I have lived here since nineteen seventy-six. When we bought our house, there were four houses in this development. I think there are two hundred and fifty houses now, so I have seen more than anyone here, maybe, maybe, um, the McDonoughs, uh, we're right about the same time we've been here. Um, I am maybe ten. No, I don't even think that's my name. I am way away from the property as far as being in a butter, but I can see and hear it. I am appalled at what is going on there and my heart breaks for the butters and what they have gone through. And I saw a couple of years ago that they finally had some protection. They finally had trees and you couldn't see anything and then boom, all the trees were cut down. So it is heart wrenching to see what's going on there and I just hope as a board, you do the right thing, not the profitable thing for certain people, but the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. David, go ahead.
I believe she was the last one. Um, if anybody else is here for the item, now is your turn to speak.
Okay, I see Counselor Ludkey, Counselor Clark and Fred. Does anyone want to speak up? And I see Carol. I don't think Carol spoke. Go ahead, Counselor Ludkey.
No, I don't have any comments. I'm just, uh, listening and I'm just, uh, really enjoying the 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 research that you're all of your speakers have done tonight. I'm impressed. I'm always impressed by what the public brings to these hearings. They're so informed. They've done such due diligence. And I just congratulate all of them for helping to make this process a good one. It's it's really, really nice to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Clark, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Chair Dewey. And I do also appreciate, um, the input and the, um, explanation, the information. So I'm here to listen. Thank you.
All right, did Fred or Carol want to speak? And then I I think Steve, I don't know. I don't think Steve spoke. Steve Holwitz on the phone.
I think there were some people here just to watch or listen.
Okay.
But.
Go ahead, Steve.
This is Steve, um, Hukalowicz. Um, I live at twenty-six Dove Lane, um, across the street from the the, uh, area and, uh, I was not planning on speaking tonight and I'll I'll save my comments for the April twelfth meeting. But, um, I'm extremely concerned about this. Thank you to Anne and Kathy for being so eloquent and, um, with the with the details and, um, and Ryan. And, um, I'm just very concerned about all the issues, the water issues, the fire issues. The, um, you know, the the issues that we don't see getting into the groundwater. So I'll save the rest of my comments for April twelve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anna, how do you want me to reference the letters from the public? Or we just want me to reference by last name or?
Yeah. And date and whether they're, well, I think they're all opposed. So just to mention that.
Okay. It's gonna take me a little bit to load them all. I don't know. This laser fish loads very slowly. The first letter we received was from Tom Swayda on March eighth. And his address loads. I don't have an address for him in here, uh, but he was in opposition. Next one. Uh, it's from Nancy Minigroad. She was also in opposition to the project. And I don't have an address for her here. Next was from Mike Werbeck, March eighth. Um, in opposition to the project. He's located eight forty-four Lambert Mill Road. Next was from Eric Schwab, March seventh. Also in opposition, he's from Hyannis. Next one from, um, March eighth from Nicole Salas, uh, at eight, uh, she's in opposition to the project. I don't have an address for her. We have a second letter from Nancy Minigroad. Um, again, in opposition to the project. Don't have an address to where she lives. Uh, a letter from Keith McKeown, um, in opposition to the project from March eighth. His address is nine thirty-six Wakeby Road. On a letter from Robert Mouch from March seventh. Um, Robert and Elizabeth Mouch, or sorry, Roberta Elizabeth Mouch, um, at eighty Greenwood Avenue, Hyannis, uh, in opposition to the project. Uh, March seventh, we received a letter from Alfred Kobacher in opposition to the project. He is a resident of Barnstable. I don't have an address. I have a letter from Julie Jones from March eighth. She's from Centerville in opposition to the project. I have a letter from Steve Polklowitz, uh, from March eighth, twenty twenty-three, uh, in opposition to the project. He lives at twenty-six Dove Lane in Marston's Mills. I believe he spoke tonight as well. A letter from March eighth from Debbie and George Quizzed from sixty-five Wakeby Road. A letter from Paula Grimes, resident of Barnstable, March eighth, um, in opposition to the project. We have a letter from Tom Doherty. I don't have an address. It's dated March eighth, um, in opposition to the project. Got a ways to go still. A letter from Dorothy DeYoung from Hyannis, March seventh, in opposition to the project. Um, a letter for, a letter from Fred Clausen from Barnstable dated March seventh, twenty twenty-three, in opposition to the project. Uh, we have a letter from March eighth from Christine and James McDonough, uh, one eleven Mockingbird Lane, Marston's Mills, in opposition to the project. Uh, we have a second letter. From Catherine McDonough, um, Cody and the McDonough family, um, dated February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, um, in opposition to the project. Uh, we have a letter from Mary Birken, Birkenshaw, at one thirty-three Mockingbird Lane, Marston's Mills, um, in opposition to the project. Um, we received a letter from Attorney McLaughlin advising, um, us to, um, hold off on a vote for tonight. Um, and then we also received, um, public comment, um, and documents from Miss Salas who spoke tonight. Um, there's quite a a large file here, um, of documents from from her, giving us a lot of insight and information on the project. I believe those are all of them. Anna, did I get all of them?
Sounds like you did, Jake.
Okay. So we're not going to close public comment tonight. But Attorney Ford, did you want to respond to any of the comments? Um, I think the most direct question I got was more information about the fires and what a short duration fire is, um, which I don't know if that's what you want to just plan to bring to the next meeting or if you want to respond to anyone's comments.
So, um, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just just fairly briefly, and I've written down a a number of things that various members and members of the public, members of the board have asked for that we will get to you uh, before the next hearing. Did want to correct a couple of, um, statements that, um, uh, are not true. Um, EverSource will not own this project. There's no plans for EverSource to to buy the solar array or to own it. EverSource will not be spraying, uh, on this property. And whatever conditions are contained in the local permits, both this one and the special permit, uh, will be binding on the property. So if somebody is concerned with respect to the application of herbicides or 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 other, um, chemicals being used on the property, uh, they certainly can condition, um, these permits. And EverSource is not going to be the owner or the lessy or have control over the property. So I just want to make sure that people are aware of that. Secondly, I think
Okay.
and your board is probably, uh, aware that the property currently, uh, the first southerly portion of the property for about five to six acres has the benefit of an active use variance for a salvage yard. That's a current permitted use on this site. That will go away on the issuance of the permits, uh, for, um, solar array. Um, so I just, I just wanted, I didn't mention that when I was going through the, uh, presentation because I know that, um, you have a lot of information on the property, uh, both from the staff report and from the butters who submitted a lot of information. And part of that information is that the Supreme Court decision that's been referenced includes a provision that, uh, the variance is still in effect. So, um, that is a clear benefit that goes away in the event that the solar array, uh, goes forward. Um, finally, uh, been mentioned several times, uh, that there's litigation. There is. You should inquire of the town attorney's office to to get whatever information you think is important with respect to the litigation. I'm not litigation counsel for T J A. Um, I I I'm aware of the current status of litigation, which is that it it currently there is a stay issued by the land court uh, in those proceedings in which T J A has alleged that the, um, land use regulations in Barnstable are not in compliance with chapter forty A, section three, with respect to reasonable regulation of of solar. But the court is aware that, um, we are going through the permitting process in an effort to seek the necessary permits to move forward, um, and obviate the need for the continuation of of the litigation. Um, but I I'd encourage the board, if there are questions about the litigation or what's going on or what's happened as a result of it, to consult with the town attorney. That that's where you should go for that. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I made a list of things that, um, have been asked for and I will endeavor to get all of those, including information about the fires that, uh, one of the butters on the northern side, uh, asked. And, um, we'll, we'll get that, uh, to you, uh, whenever the board decides this next hearing will be.
Claire. All right. Um, anyone from the board have any questions or comments tonight?
I have one. Uh, if we deny this appeal, then we can't make any conditions, correct? But if we approve the appeal with can, we can make conditions like, I'll just leave it to your imagination. But if we deny the appeal, we are, uh, completely, um, we have no power to make any conditions, correct? So I'll just leave that open to discussion.
Okay.
I think you get what I mean.
Mr. Chairman. May I ask?
Uh, well, public comment's still up, but yes, if it's something quick, quick, sure. Go ahead, Ms. House.
Uh, Mr. Ford, what utility will be taking over the array? How will the energy be transmitted to the grid?
There is an interconnect permit that EverSource has granted already to allow the, uh, electricity uh, to get to the grid. That interconnect permit, uh, was approved by EverSource, but it doesn't give EverSource the right to own the property or manage the property.
Who will be managing the property then?
There will be an entity that will manage and and control the property.
Can you identify that entity?
Entity. But it will not be a utility. But it will not be a utility.
Can you identify the identity, please?
Not at this point, I can't.
Attorney South, I mean, Ms. House, we'll take your comments into consideration. You know, again, we have, as, as Herb mentioned, we have an ability to condition these kind of things. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You know, feel free to speak to that at, you know, our next meeting when we talk about it more, we can consider, you know, adding things that might, might cover some of your concerns.
Thank you.
All right. We've, as discussed and as recommended by Attorney McLaughlin, we want to continue this. I'm inclined to continue to April 12. I don't want us to dictate things by the planning board. And I think this is sort of a, I don't know, I just, I, I think it's, it's good for everyone if we have an in-person meeting. I know there may be some repetition. But I just, I still have time with the Zoom stuff. So I'm going to make a motion that we continue to April 12, 2023.
I second that.
Have a second or to someone? All right. So we'll do a roll call vote. Aaron Webb.
I'm in favor of that.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor of that. Thank you.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Our Boden Seek.
Totally in favor.
And I am also in favor. So Attorney Ford, I know that wasn't maybe the time you wanted, but I, I just, that's how I feel comfortable moving it forward. And hopefully, my attorney McLaughlin will be available between now and then. We can, we can beat with him if need be.
Mr. Chairman, why we still have him if he's on, Mr. Cuffer from the planning board? I think you made a comment earlier in the evening that you didn't believe that that would continuing to April would prevent the planning board from proceeding with the special permit. Was that on the advice from staff?
Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. So there's nothing that would prevent the planning board from opening the hearing for the special permit. Obviously, the decision by the zoning board would be would potentially alter the plan that is before the planning board. So I, my understanding is it would be difficult for the planning board to render a decision until such time as the zoning board has, but there's nothing that would limit the planning board from at least opening their hearing.
Thank you, Jim. So there, there is a timing issue with respect to the litigation. And so I would suggest you consult with the town attorney with respect to that, that question as, as well, Mr. Jim, and as, as we move forward. But I can appreciate the board's desire to have a live hearing.
Thank you, Attorney Ford. All right. So moving on, we did not have any correspondence, I don't think, unless I missed something, Anna. Nothing?
No, we had, we had none.
Okay.
Don't, Mr. Chairman, don't we have to take a vote in terms of continuance of this?
Didn't I just do that? Or am I losing my mind?
Well, I may be losing mine.
Anna, did I just take a vote that we moved?
Well, in favor.
To April 12.
You did.
Yes.
Okay. And then matters that reasonably anticipated, the only thing that like came up was attorney lawyers, you know, a request for continuance very close to our meeting time. David, who is not on the board anymore, is one who sort of put forward that role that we, that if it's going to be close, they come before us. I don't know how everyone feels about that, or if we just want to clarify it, or are we letting people send emails in that they're going to continue on the day of or day before? They don't have any thoughts?
I think we just should remind people as we move forward as the attorney approach, that we remind them for any continuances that they need to, you know, they need to give us some time. It's out of courtesy for staff.
Yeah.
I don't understand why. What, what time do we need? They want to continue up until five minutes to seven. I don't care. It doesn't.
But it's a matter of they come before us. So Paul, you feel comfortable if someone sends it? You feel comfortable if someone sends an email five minutes before saying they're not coming and that's it?
Yeah, what, so what?
It doesn't have as much bearing when we don't have a heavy schedule, but you know how it gets when we start, you know, loading these things up.
Well, you're not, I mean, you, you're not going to add anything to the schedule the day before.
No, but there, there should be legitimate. They should at least be presenting a reason.
Why? It would just cost the citizens more money for a lawyer.
And I think David, David Hertz's, his argument was that it was disrespectful to us that if we're going to be here expecting to see them, that they're going to show up here and tell us why they're continuing it. I mean, I would like at least to see a explanation versus just, we're going to continue this. We want to continue this.
We could require an explanation via email. I don't feel disrespected. I, I want, I don't want citizens to keep paying money because we have this rule that doesn't mean anything.
Well, you know, Jake's right and David's right. If they just give us the courtesy of a day's notice. If they don't, they don't. There's no fine involved, but it's a courtesy and so. Play it forward.
Yeah, but I don't think it's, it's a requirement that if they.
It doesn't have to be a requirement.
Oh, well, that's what Jake said, Herb. Okay, I'm responding to that.
True.
And, and, yeah. Go ahead, Eric.
I do remember it is something we discussed and we sort of put down as a requirement that they give 24 hours notice in the attorney's law or email. He quickly said, please accept this email as a request to continue zoning for a hearing April 12, 2023, after corresponding with staff. But that came this morning at 10:40. I believe 10:43 AM, 10:15. So, yeah, it's, it's, again, I agree, no, I agree with you, Paul, 100%. It's either we, we, we set a policy or we don't. There's no, there's no determining it as a courtesy. I mean, it, it is courtesy, of course, to do that. But we don't, it either, we said it as a policy or we don't. So.
I move that we say it as a policy.
Okay, perfect.
That 24 hours, Herb, is that sort of our cutoff at?
Absolutely.
And that was what the, as I recall, as I recall, that was what the policy was. So.
And there was a response to a larger problem, which was attorneys turning in things minutes before the hearings.
Right.
Like voluminous.
Yeah.
Hundred page things, but you know, at the very least, they could give us the courtesy of postponing 24 hours in advance. But I think the bigger problem is
Oh, yeah.
giving us large amounts of data.
That was part of the original discussion. Yeah.
Okay. So let's say, Anna, I, I would like to say before you, you guys clock off of work at four the day before.
4:30.
4:30. So.
I thought it was 9:43 PM.
I just, to to, to me, it's preparing for the meeting too, you know, it takes time and effort. So when someone just decides not to show up, it's really annoying. I would say that, you know, we would need to know by end of business the day before, not 24 hours before the meeting. So by 4:30 on the day before would be what I would propose that we say is we won't want to hear. I don't think we need to take a vote on that, Anna, or anything, do we? We just make that that is our sort of policy going forward?
Sounds good.
What's the?
It's really for the public's good because a lot of people, like, let's say today we postpone the entire TJA thing for however many weeks. There would have been a whole bunch of people that had, like, logged on to Zoom for nothing, or worse yet, shown up to the town hall for nothing.
So we're going to find out.
Online.
So, so Paul, so basically going forward, if it's going to be an in writing continuance, they need to submit it at least 24 hours before. If it's, otherwise they need to show up and, and tell us what, or we can deny it and say, no, we want to, you know, open public comment. If we have a huge group of public here, I think it's only fair that, you know, we say, hey, we want to move this forward.
Let me ask a question. Anna, you get a tele, you get an email the morning before or 24 hours, what it is, how do you let the public know that it's going to be?
I would put the request for continuance in, on the website. And then I would email whoever I've been talking to to let them know that it's going to be continued. So that's, that's about all I can do.
Then. Well, one of the persons, lawyers here in person or not is irrelevant to me. So if you want a rule that says you can't cancel within no early or no later than 24 hours before, that's okay. But the fact that you're going to make him show up is, to me, irrelevant. That's a penalty on a citizen who has to pay the money.
Hmm. Hmm? What?
I mean, I, I'm inclined to make it, you know, the rule, but if you guys don't think so, we can change it. We don't have to.
I tend to lean with Paul on this, except it is, it is a penalty to the, to the client. And they should take that up with their attorney. I mean, if it's the attorney's issue, I guess, you know, I don't know what the, you know, find a better, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's a tough call, Paul. I, I agree. It's, it definitely is a penalty to make the attorney, to make the eternity show up. Because either they're not prepared or something has changed, or they have a scheduling conflict to come to a Zoom or in person to then ask a continuance of us and give us an explanation that frankly, you know, I don't see us not continuing them. We haven't not continued somebody, had somebody's request ever, at least since I've been here. So you know, it is sort of formality at this point. I don't care one way or the other, honestly.
I mean, we had one case where the lawyer was sick or broke his leg or something, had to go to the hospital, and an email. So he could show up in person. So who cares? You want to make it 24 hours, make it 24 hours and let's go. Come on, we're going to go.
I don't care.
Counselor Clark is our liaison. Do you?
Thank you.
Wisdom for us?
Don't count on me for wisdom, but can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I was just going to echo what Paul just said. I said, emergencies come up and like if someone was sick or broke their leg or had a family emergency, you might want to be able to be accommodating for those kinds of situations. But I do understand on normal conditions, you would want to communicate to the regular attorneys who come before you that it would be a courtesy to give them, give you some more notice than you got today. Thank you.
Aaron.
I'm sorry, real quick. Again, if we're going to set a policy and then an attorney doesn't abide by the policy, requests a continuance from Anna, what's the penalty? I mean, if they don't, even what if they don't show up to the meeting? Do we just, we vote against whatever they're, they're to do? I mean, so and this is sort of semantics. I think we're just going to waste some time. I think it's, my opinion is there is no policy and it is courtesy. If people aren't courteous, then that's the position we're in. We live with it. Unless we come up with a defined penalty, which is what? I mean, I don't know what we, how do we penalize somebody?
I mean, I think it would take an act of counsel to make, to make them have to pay a fee. I don't think we could make them make, pay another, another application fee. I don't know.
Exactly. So we can sit here without the attorney, then debate the issue and then say, well, we're going to continue it to the next meeting anyway. So.
I, I just have a simple question. How many people were inconvenienced tonight because some attorney didn't give 24 hours?
At least one. I know at least one was online for that, for that hearing.
Well, I don't.
I don't know about the others.
If that one.
But Paul, you have to turn it the other way. What if that person had hired an attorney?
Wait a minute now. If that person was a citizen, they wouldn't know. How would they know?
Well, at least. An attorney that they were paying to sit here that didn't know was continued. You know, that they're paying for, what if they had hired an attorney?
Mr. Chairman, I gotta go. Okay, this is ridiculous. I gotta go. Cut me out, okay? This is ridiculous.
If I could, may, may the, the real issue is when they bombard us, like I said, hundreds of pages of stuff on the day of the hearing. That's the real issue.
But Herb, no offense, but it doesn't, I mean, how often does that really happen?
It's not that. We're still, we're still making an attempt when we have a night like tonight where 15, 20 people log on, we at least can make a, a reasonable effort to notify those people not five minutes before.
Yes.
That's all. People make plans, people have families.
Paul, I agree, Mark, I completely agree.
That's all it is.
But I agree.
It's not that we need to have them come in front of us, but we, you know, Anna's in, how many people were you in touch with on this, Anna?
Oh, probably six or seven people by email or phone. But I, I do tell everybody to check the website before the meeting because there are oftentimes last minute changes. So whenever I talk to a resident, I always say, check the website.
Did you talk to everybody, every resident that was on, every citizen that was on this TJ, did you talk to them all?
No, not all of them.
Someone going to miss them.
Yeah, I mean, it happens at the town council level all the time. I mean, no offense to attorney, you know, council or clerk or anybody else. But it happens, they were talking about voting on certain things for, for meeting after meeting after meeting, and they've got postponed ala minute all the time. So it happens. It's the nature of the beast. And unless we have a defined, you know, penalty, there's, we're just wasting time here. In my opinion.
Yeah.
Got to fall, fell under courtesy though, just for.
Agree, but I, if an attorney's not courteous, then he's not courteous. What can we can't? You know, that's, that's on him.
Yeah, that's against them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Paul, come back.
So is, is the. So we'll leave it, so just leave it the way it's, the way it's said. Let's leave it that way.
The meeting?
Upcoming hearings, March 22nd, April 12th and April 26th. Motion to adjourn. I need a second.
Second.
Roll call vote, her, her bow and seek.
I'm in favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor. Paul Pennard in favor. In favor.
I'm also in favor. So we're adjourned.